I don't know if that, I don't know how that works. Maybe they're linked, I don't know. Good afternoon, can folks on the internet hear us okay?
Yeah.
Thanks David.
Are we ready to start? You guys ready? Are we ready, are we online and everything? Okay. Just want to welcome everybody to our work study today that's going to talk a little bit about the Munster TOD, Transportation Oriented District, I believe it's called, or Development.
Transit Development District.
That's why we're having this meeting, so we can learn more about what some of these acronyms are. My name is Chuck Arden, I'm the council president this year. I guess I would ask the councilors if you want to just introduce yourselves first and then I'll introduce other staff members that are here.
Hi, I'm Leanne Mellon, I'm a member of the town council.
Wendy?
I'm Wendy Miss, I am the Town of Munster Clerk Treasurer.
And with us also Dustin Anderson and Robin Streets from our town administration staff. Brian Speck from our planning commission is here. We have some members of the police department, Chief Shekko, Officer Broman and you're probably Lieutenant Broman now, right? Yeah, okay, sorry, sorry about that. Lieutenant Pirate is here from the police department. Tom Van den Woods from here, here from our community development department, is that the correct department? Yes, okay, good, I'm learning these different departments. Trish Abbott's in the back with our Clerk Treasurer's office and Mike Hawkins is here who's on our solid waste committee or something like that. So, very good. I guess I would ask our people that are guests here from the other various organizations, can you introduce yourselves so we all know who everybody else is here?
Sure, I'm Sheri Ziller, I'm president and CEO of the Northwest Indiana Regional Development Committee.
Yeah, I'm Eric Wirkus, I'm with MKSK. We're working with the RDA on the Transit Development District Planning. We're also working with NITD on the Transit Oriented Development Planning work as well.
Eric Kowalski, MKSK Project Manager for the TDD and POD.
And I'm David Reynolds with Policy Analytics, Financial Advisor to the RDA.
I'm Sean Herrick, we're all planner houses.
Very good, and we have a couple of people online that are part of, I guess, root from RDA. Okay, and there are the individuals themselves, you can just tell who they are.
There's Bill Sheldrick, colleague with David, my homie, and then I saw David Baumann and he is with the RDA, he's our communication director.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything to present, I guess I'm turning this over to MKSK so they can kind of give us the update or information. And again, this is a chance for us to have a discussion with them. If there's some things that get brought up or ideas that we need to ask right away, I think we can interrupt their presentation, so to speak, and ask the questions. If there's some things that we need to take on from this meeting on to the next meeting or something else, let's make sure you write the notes down and get the information out there. Most important part of this is to have, create that communication between us, MKSK and RDA, when we start talking about TDD and TOD, that we all know what we're talking about. Okay, thank you, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, Sheri, do you want to say anything or else you want?
Oh no, we're very pleased to be with everyone today and we appreciate the partnership as always and just a few conversations as we were walking in. I think there's varying levels where we're at in the understanding process, we're more than happy to start at the beginning and that's what we plan to do. We'll make this as informal as you all are comfortable with at any point, if anyone has a question, we're here to learn from each other. And we're excited, we have a great presentation for you.
Yeah, we'll take it away. Great to be here, thanks for putting all this together. It's gonna be very good, a very good session, a lot of information that we're going to share, a lot of content that I think you're going to get back to us. Will be helpful to how we start to think about the TDDs more specifically in Munster. And I think we do need to back up a little bit and describe TDD versus TOD and what that is for the audience's benefit. But we do have a lot of data that we prepared for today's meeting. And the data is about how the community has grown, how it's maybe projected to grow. What kind of growth strategies the town might consider in the future based upon the past growth cycles here. So we have a lot of data that is numbers based, so hopefully everybody can see the screens. But, but I think it tells a good story and it's a real good opportunity for the town to sort of plan intentionally what to do with the balance of the land that the town has to develop. There's not a lot, we'll see that, there's very little ground left here in the town of Munster. And so how you think about that land with respect to how you're growing. The people that live in the community today, the people who may want to live in the community. Today's a good opportunity to really start to grapple with it. Because as you probably already have developers knocking on your door, they're interested in doing work in your community, it's an attractive community for a lot of reasons. So when those, when those calls occur, you want to be able to give good guidance to those folks. And ultimately, this is a community conversation, of course, we're starting it here or, you know, maybe not starting it, we're continuing it here. But this is a community conversation about, you know, what you want to see. And we're not here to necessarily advocate any one particular growth strategy. But we're here to provide you with as much information as you need as a community to sort of understand the implications of decisions that you might be making. And these are real time decisions, there's a tremendous opportunity with this connectivity into Chicago to sort of leverage what you are as a community today and put you onto a growth path that is right for you. This is probably once in a generational opportunity and based upon where the train lines are coming in to the city and where the stations are. You know, there is, there is opportunity right there to do something unique. The example that we like to think of here locally is Centennial Village. It's a newer, newer place and it's different. And there is a lot of qualities about Centennial Village that allow it to sort of merge into the fabric of Munster and be successful. And so the two train stations offer maybe another opportunity for that to occur. And so think about that as we begin to go through all the data. Try to, try to keep your thoughts at a high level because it's easy to go down into the, to the numbers and get really analytical. But continue to think about the vision for where you want to be as a community and this moment in time and how how unique this moment in time is, you only get this once. And I'm going to turn it over to Aaron for the bulk of the meeting, but I will say this, and Chuck referenced it, this is really more of a dialogue. So we do have a good amount of slides and it's our intention to take as much time as we need to go through these slides because there's, there's a lot of numbers on these slides and we want to make sure there's no confusion over the numbers or how they were, how were they, how we derived the numbers. So we're going to methodically work our way through this series of slides so that we can all
Are the slides also available in soft copy and display?
I don't know that we have printouts. Is that what you're referring, no, you're referring to, we can electronically get those out. Yeah, I don't. You have.
There was a copy of the slideshow that was sent out via email, I can email that to you right here? Okay, yeah, I've got the.
All right. And for those on the web, we are sharing our screen, we just got started.
All right. So to begin, and I think some of you are familiar with this, some are. So TDD, what is a TDD? A TDD is a Transit Development District. And what's important to know about this is as part of the rail project, the state of Indiana, state legislature put together special legislation to create economic development districts around each of the station areas along the West Lake Corridor and the existing South Shore Corridor, including the double track stations. And so the way these work is the TDD areas capture property taxes in a similar way that TIP district that you all have, you know, the community today works. But then it can also capture local income tax as well. And so what that allows for is a couple of things. A district can be drawn and we'll flash it up on the screen here in a moment for the community. And in the case of Munster, there's one drawn for Ridge Road and for Main Street. The Main Street one also includes some property in the town of Dyer. And within these districts, the dollars that are collected and will be, you know, kind of spent in the communities for purposes of economic development and infrastructure that enables development within these districts. The RDA will work with the local communities to put together a memorandum of understanding or agreement for how, you know, money will be spent. Again, functioning similar to a TIP district, if there's existing TIP districts as there are in a lot of proportions of Munster, there will be some interaction between the two. And again, that would be something that's negotiated and worked through and as these are finalized, they're currently in draft format. So where these economic development boundaries have to go, tax is before the RDA board for approval. We've made some slight tweaks, I believe, to the Ridge Road and Main Street boundary, but those have been approved and we've reviewed by county officials. So if there are further changes that you all like for the boundaries, we can of course discuss that. As far as these batteries are concerned, what's a little bit different than a TIP is that they're limited to one half square mile or 320 acres of area. They can be expanded once up to one square mile or 640 acres. Another thing to note is within Lake and Porter County, of course Munsters and Lake, there's, there's kind of other incentives that include the ability to bond through the IFA as opposed to through the local entity. And that's important for some of the communities in both of Indiana. Munster has a good bonding capacity and the ability to do projects in that way, but that is an added benefit. These also are established economic development districts, so if you're applying for tax credits or other incentives as part of a development project, there's opportunities to get extra points and some of those applications.
Are there any questions on this or anything I left out?
I understand incremental property tax difference. How is the local income tax? Is that people living in that location or is it working in that location? Or how is the local income tax revenue increment figured? The first question, you guys pass it off to somebody else.
The, the, the TDDs are set up to capture the local increment on both, the expectation was, let me say it that way, the expectation was that it was to capture both the incremental income for people living there in the district and working in the district. That was the expectation. We ran into a little bit of a hiccup, if you will, and the Department of Revenue is not interpreting that way. And so currently, it's being interpreted that it would only be people that lived in the district. So we're continuing dialogues with, with the state. And so that, so I guess it's, I'm answering it from the standpoint of somewhat in process and the work. But as it sets right now with the interpretation of the Department of Revenue, it's only residents living in the district.
Thank you. And is, is the, the districts that are being talked about for Munster, are they currently at the 320 acre area? Okay.
They're slightly under and that's purpose, on purpose because sometimes there are, within your county accessory's office, sometimes there may be survey errors. So we want to account for a couple acres of wiggle room, so we've intentionally kept them slightly under the 320 threshold.
How long does the TDD exist?
That lasts until they expire June 30th of 47.
Other questions? Keep going. So phase one, so we've talked about the TDD process, what the TDD is. So phase one of the process was working with all of you very closely, particularly Dustin and Tom, Leanne. To understand kind of economic development opportunities from a geographic perspective, we did a lot of analysis over kind of the past several years. And we've gotten to a point where, you know, we conducted initial analysis of the study areas. We've worked with local officials to draft these TDD boundaries. We did some very high level, what we call land use and development planning, basically looking at if an area were to develop, what is the opportunity to do so? We're continuing to refine that, that's part of what we want to review with all of you today. Preparing boundaries for review and approval, so they are in draft format today. And in the near future, they will be established. And you'll see this little diagram once again, this is not the Munster boundary. It's just a little infographic showing that the boundary is irregular in shape. So the Ridge Road TDD, you can see it defined there in green. Includes property as far south as Nancy Country Club. Includes property as far north as Broadmore Avenue. Captures a portion of Calumet Avenue all the way up to the river. And then of course down to Ridge Road follows the Ridge Road corridor from Calumet all the way to the state line. And from a TOD perspective, which we'll be talking about here in a moment, really that can be defined as blockable kind of properties along the Ridge Road corridor in particular, as well as along the Manor Avenue corridor that may be close proximity to the station. And it, it, these boundaries were designed in an intentional way, not to impact single family neighborhoods in particular in this area. We wanted to make sure that as we're thinking about economic development areas, you know, it's really those places that could develop or redevelop in the future. So sites that may be vacant or underutilized, underperforming or have good value from an economic development perspective. And so, you know, as we looked at the Ridge Road area, that was really our intent, and that boundary is about 310 acres today.
Sure. How would you find out on under, underperformance site?
So that could be, for instance, a large parking lot that perhaps could be associated with a business and a lot of times we look at, okay, should it be a parking lot or could it be developed as another tax generating use? That could contribute to the district and in particular, since you all recently did a streetscape plan that, that really emphasized quality of place that you all want to see along Ridge Road. That was an important aspect as we're considering sites as well as how do we promote the development land uses that would further complement the corridor that you all envision this area? Other questions about this particular area?
I have a question. We kind of, as you can see, we kind of designed this and you mentioned this to avoid single family neighborhoods. In light of the interpretation that only the res, the income taxes associated with residential, residential, where you live, where you work, does that change, you know, the approach that we should be taking with respect to drawing the boundaries of the TDD? Given that we would expect that there would be some benefit from the income tax side even in residential neighborhoods?
David, can I add?
Yeah.
Add into.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from, from, from our perspective or our advice, if you will, to the RDA on this, it would be that we're not done trying to convince the state that they're interpreting it wrong and they need to, they need to add them back in. I mean, that's the whole, the whole, the whole concept behind transit oriented development is the concept of, of drawing and bringing the people into the district, if you will. And that's the, the, the reason the state made the investment that it did in the rail projects. And so we're trying to help the state to get to that, to get back to their understanding of what we thought it was. So, so I guess, I'm, I guess from my perspective, I'm not willing, ready to say that that's a change, if you will, in moving forward.
It also gives two, maybe two other reasons why we should preserve those, is areas outside of the TD, TDD district. Over time, the areas in green may have more residents. That's, that's something we'll kind of talk through here as a scenario. You may have increased residents in these areas. And so from that perspective, even though there's not a lot of people living inside the green boundaries today, there could be in the future. The other thing that I would point out is you do get the chance to increase the footprint of each district one time by doubling its footprint. And so, and that can happen into the future, of course. And when that happens, you could have that as an option. You could consider incorporating single family, maybe you're not thinking about it in redevelopment, but you want to capture that income tax in a different way. So
I'm sorry, I mean, and I guess the other, the other piece of that too, Tom, is a single family on the property tax side would not be captured. Because it's, it's not a it's not eligible for capture, if you will.
Whereas business development, that property taxes is captured, right, increment is, right?
And where, and business development includes the, when I say residential, it's the single family residential that's not captured. You know, if it's, if it's lots or townhomes or the business development type residence, so that is captured, mixed use development, yeah.
Is there, maybe I'm a step ahead, I don't, is there a reason why you would expand the boundary other than just being greedy? Or is that something that's kind of more, you know, anticipated that eight years down the line, 10 years down the line, that's when that happens? Or why wouldn't we just?
Want to do that?
Yeah.
Well, in Munsters case, there's not a lot of development ground left. So, you know, what we've tried to do is preserve options in the future to allow you to make that decision later and to try to really target what is good development opportunity today.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think the statute doesn't, the statute doesn't contemplate an initial if you decide, now what is it, oh, mile square, at miles per, sorry. It doesn't contemplate that, it's a single 320, 320 acres and then you can expand it later.
I like the idea of targeting.
How would you like to handle questions? Because there's a panelist that asked a pertinent question about the allocation.
Yeah, we can answer that question.
The question was from a member of our community who serves in the Board of Southern Appeals. Is the captured tax revenue allocated only to Munster? That's easier to say.
The, the, the revenues that are captured and transferred to the RDA would be dedicated back into the district from which they were captured. So on the Ridge Road, that would all be Munster. On the Main Street, the, the taxes that were captured in that TDD that are on, out of north of Main Street, we go to Munster. The, the TDD permit that was captured south of Main Street would be dedicated to the TDD entire.
So, so what we're hearing, and again, maybe this is sometimes the, you know, people, the one that's captured is not going to RDA, it's going to the town of Munster.
It will, like, be held into an escrow account with the RDA, but each of our communities will have their own. The increment derived from that, from that district was right back to that district. So we wouldn't, so whatever Munsters produces, we would be able to spend it in Portage or Chasertown or East Chicago. So it was right back to you.
Okay.
For things, they don't get to, for things like infrastructure, we admit, some tax developers, that's, that's the basic basis.
Okay.
And that's all statutory through.
I, I kind of thought, but you're going to hear, you hear things get out of whack. Or some people, you know, try to explain different things. Okay, appreciate it, yes.
Especially the question too, for clarification. So, so we'll have our own escrow account. And the RDA has to, it's a by case, case by case basis for development. But is that case by cases that, that the RDA has to want to desire that project as well? Or is it just simply of the, what the town wants?
Leanne, I think it's, it's just like it has been from the beginning. It's going to be a collaborative process. So if there's a project that the town would like to see, then we'll work together with you all. And if that's the one that you want to work on, then that's the one that we continue to work on. We would, we would knock it out in front of what the town wants.
Or stop what the town wants. I mean, like, if it's something that you say, well, that's really not going to, that's not like our vision for the TOD?
We'll do a thorough analysis for you. And yeah, we'll have that conversation. But yeah, it, it's going to be an ongoing conversation. So there, there wouldn't be a situation where we would mandate that you take a project on your, we'll work together. And if a developer calls us, then we're going to draft them to have that broader conversation.
Any other questions before we keep moving on?
Maybe just to elaborate a little bit, if there's a project going on, how was the plan commissioned?
Same way as they normally, so all locals zoning control and approvals reside with the local community. So Main Street TDDs, we looked at the Ridge Road TDD up on the screen a few moments ago. Main Street is, is the second TDD in the town of Munster. It also overlaps into the town of Dyer, as I mentioned. And you can see Main Street and then the areas north. So in particular, this captures the area where Nick D tends to build their parking lot. The vacant Greenfield property further to the west. There's about a 70 acre parcel that is vacant between Columbia and Calumet. See that up on the screen, of course, to the north of that area, there is an existing office space. Further north on Calumet, there are some properties south of the Franciscan facility that could see future economic development investment as well. We did also capture Centennial Village area in that boundary. So as you're looking at, at these properties, what we've envisioned is really focusing from a development perspective on two areas, but in particular for TOD that really is kind of centered around almost a village concept. If you see the scale of Centennial Village versus the Main Street Nick D site and adjoining site, there could be opportunity for joint development there. So that's why we included that boundary. And then, of course, there is opportunity for some, some commercial development in, in some of those other areas.
Aaron, I would just say that it looks like that the neighborhood, the, the property that is in that single-family neighborhood snuck back in there. We took that out.
We could definitely check on that. I know we removed a portion of it, if you all.
Yeah, we removed everything except for what Nick D owned.
Okay, we'll double check that map, okay?
There's, there are actually houses built there right now.
Yes, yes, I understand that. Okay, we will, we will fix that. Thanks for pointing that out. And these batteries are still in draft format, so thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I imagine they don't, they don't have to be connected at all. They, they could be like, like you're showing here, right? Doesn't look like Centennial Village is connected to the, the Main Street station. Then that's by design.
Yeah, they're, they're contiguous, so they would function similar to the Tiff boundary there. In the case there, I believe following the road right away.
Okay.
There is though some scope around the, in the undeveloped areas around the Main Street station in that boundary.
Correct. Yeah, we'll get to that here in a moment.
And just one question on Centennial Village being, what's the implications or what sort of things can our, our happy imagination come up with as a part of TDD competitive residence at Centennial Village?
So, sorry, this kind of froze on me too. So to answer your question, did you want me to answer that question or are you just kind of picking one up?
Well, I imagine you thought of, like, when you draw all these boundaries, you start imagining, oh, what can, what can the implications be here? What cool things could be built?
So I think the reason we wanted to capture Centennial Village is we understood that there were opportunities for continued economic development there. There's successful developments in that area that we felt could be a model for other developments elsewhere in the town. And then I believe we also wanted to make sure it's connected in the event that there were other infrastructure improvements that could be funded by the TDD district in that area.
And since that is, does have a big residential component that's growing, all the income tax from all the fantastic jobs that those residents will have can come back into developing anywhere that's green.
Absolutely.
I also speak to the, how big is that income tax funding? Is that a big deal or a medium deal or a small deal?
It's, it's, it's not going to be as large as the profit tax. I don't know if I could assign, if you will, a, a ratio with the profit tax. It's going to be the lion's share of the, of the TDD. Not the, I mean, in the other piece, so I'm, I'm sorry if I'm going into a rabbit hole here, but another nice thing about capturing the local income tax is it, it directly comes back to the TDD. The way income, local income tax works in, in Indiana, it, it goes to the county and then it's allocated to your area based on your level. So you may or may not see that and, you know, and you may not directly see that in your, in your community. But this way, at least, it's directly coming into the TDD and directly being applied.
Thank you.
So we talked a lot about TDDs. And what's important to remember here is that TDD or Transit Development District boundaries are a means or a catalyst, an economic development tool, if you will, to help the communities to achieve transit oriented development. And, and I want to be clear when we say TOD that it's defined a little differently in each of our North West Indiana communities. So it's part of the reason we're having, you know, this discussion with you all or listening. Because it, it really, it takes on some characteristics that are similar. So we think about walkability, we think about green space, we think about good quality, commercial businesses. Think about the quality of streetscape that you all envisioned for Ridge Road. That's TOD, that, that's an integral part of TOD. Along with it comes, you know, kind of a focus on how the station and the riders that are brought into the station can be a catalyst for, for their economic development, job growth, commercial growth, residential growth within these communities and within kind of a walkable distance, which is roughly defined as a quarter mile of the station areas. Now, if you have good quality packages, like you all do with trails, for instance, that can be expanded because people are willing to bike to a station, not have to hop on, hop in their car. We can all, I think, if I mentioned it, envisioned that. So I did want to make sure I mentioned that. But as, as we think about the work plan, what I wanted to kind of let you all know and kind of go through briefly is kind of where we are in the process in both of these station areas. And you can see that same infographic on the right. That's not your boundary, but it's just a graphic interpretation of how we're really targeting various areas for different types of studies where they might be needed. We've met with Dustin and Leanne and Tom already to understand some of the local preferences and priorities for this effort. We put together a work plan. And so as part of that, you know, we know that you all have a, a recent zoning ordinance and actually the same firm that completed your recent zoning ordinance is part of our TOD team. So there are certain things such as parking that they are, are going to be looking at, frontage types that they're going to be looking at as part of their component of the study. From a land use perspective, we really are trying to think about the character of these areas in green, so the transit development districts, and work with you all to understand kind of what future character or future state you'd like to see, especially within some of the sites that we think the development community is going to have a lot of interest in here in the near future, if not already. And, and so kind of helping you all kind of get ready from a land use and zoning perspective for your upcoming comprehensive plan in particular is really where we want to help inform. We're hopeful that the recommendations that come out of this process, as well as some of the kind of detailed exhibits like this can help be part of that conversation as well and kind of help the town to think deliberately about future land use and, and development. As part of our team also, we have engineers looking at transportation, infrastructure, environmental assessment. And they've already been kind of intergrowing and helping us look at utility capacity, which I'll talk about here in a moment, as well as, you know, kind of evaluating the, the great plans that you all have done for Ridge Road and Calumet. We, we would like to, we have time today, which we may not, think, start thinking about Main Street because we understand from Dustin that there's an opportunity in working with the FPO to really think about the future state of, of that corridor. And so that's a priority of the town because as part of this TOD process, we can actually get one step in front of that process to begin to think about how that really could integrate well into the station area and connect back into the neighborhoods. As we kind of gone through other components of this, so TOD development testing, for the first phase of our testing is, is what we're here to look with you all at here in a few moments, as well as some additional, what we call, impact analysis that kind of has resulted from several conversations that we had. So I'd be happy to answer questions about our TOD work plan. We are kind of making good progress here on, on these various elements. At the end of the day, this will be compiled into a summary that then will kind of live on as a document as part of this process, but then also kind of a condensed version of that summary can be utilized by the town as you all work on your comprehensive plan update in the near future.
I, I will add, we've been working diligently with the town in Munster in particular. We've helped more dialogue and progress than in other, other communities. But with this current scope of work that Aaron just explained, the, the work concludes in July of this year. And so we want to squeeze as much work as we can out of this process with you all. And so the more conversations we have, the more sort of progress we make, the better because we, we do have an end date to how long this scope can last.
And then I, I think one thing just to mention, if some of you are probably aware of this, but, and Eric mentioned that, you know, that Nick D is involved in this effort. So Nick D and the RDA jointly went after a grant through the Federal Transit Administration to do transportation oriented development for all of these communities. And as part of that, this competitive process, NFTSK was selected to lead a team to do this TOD planning. And we brought on several sub consultants. I mentioned the group that did the town's zoning ordinance, TPUDC, some of you may know. Policy Analytics is actually not part of our consultant team, but they are economic advisors to the RDA. So we continue to work closely with them. Shrewsbury is on our team as well as Patrick from the environmental side. I won't go through this work plan in a lot of detail, but if Dustin sends out, when Dustin sends out this slide deck, you can kind of see a more detailed review of the, the different components and kind of where we're tracking. I'd like to get into our impact analysis now, but would like to pause for a moment and see if there's any questions.
I have one.
Here.
When you're saying your planning process is going to be completed by the end of summer, for those of us that live pretty close to the epicenter of what your TOD plan is, we will be contacted and said we should start planning for something to do. Because it's been very secretive, there's been no handshake going on with the residents. It's been kind of a quiet process.
So are you thinking that there's going to be a project or something in your neighborhood or next to you?
I'll put, I'll put it this way. I'm talking about a section about 150 yards from the pro station of Ridge Road and the Monique Trail.
Sure, sure.
There's four families that own down near five acres. So that's a quarter of your 20 acre center. Nobody's contacted us about anything now.
Because no one's contacted us, right? So.
What has been done by town, the zoning has changed from R1 to, I believe, S2, which always, I, I believe it's S2. Anyway, when I looked up whatever the definition is, when I tried to get some information, they said, well, that's for multiple zoning. That's fairly interesting because yes, something was done by the town and nobody contacted us.
Well, the town did undertake a revision to our zoning code. And that was a public process. So we had, we were at the farmer's markets, we were at the Little Rigs, we were at the schools. We put in the news, you can use, we put it on our Facebook. We had meetings here at Town Hall, we had meetings at Centennial Park. So I hear what you're saying, you didn't hear about it? But, but I did, and the town did, and the council did on the radio show. The council members talked about it on the radio. It was out there and it was completely in the open. And the feedback that we got from residents was also in the open. So I get where you're coming from, like, it, it changed, and that's true. But it was not done in secret.
I, I said, why?
Why? I don't know how more about it.
And, and, and again, I just want to get some information because the person I live next to is 94 years old. She doesn't have the ability to do this. So we're trying to get something done, and I'm trying to track what's happening. And I can't see for a life of it, probably town or the TOD steering committee or the RDA or Nick D or One Region. I mean, give up five acres when you only got to buy off three acres.
Let, let me interject here. We're having this discussion here just so a lot of, we can get brought up to the process.
Appreciate that.
I, I think the process is going to be much longer than the next three months. What, what these gentlemen are talking about is their design process is going on for a couple of months here. Finishes in July. I would like to talk to you after, at 3 o'clock today and kind of find out exactly the specifics of what, what you're mentioning here.
Sure.
I think, I think there's the, the impression that things are happening right now construction wise and there's trees being knocked down and clearing happening. But this process that we're talking about and some of the redevelopment that we're talking about, while the plans are being talked about or discussed or, or themes are being discussed, I haven't seen anything that says this is what's going to happen. You know, so I do think that's one of the things that we want to have a lot. And, and I do appreciate your comments, but again, I think it's best if we can kind of finish up with this part. I'll talk to you afterwards and we can kind of go from there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's all I have to say. But what Stan's saying is this property is put in the green zone, which you guys have brought up. And this is what we talked about in 2017, when the whole neighborhood was coming to these meetings. We said, why don't you guys send us a letter? Why don't you notify us? Dustin, I appreciate that you're at farmer's markets and everywhere. But you're only talking four houses. Why can't you send a letter to people before they get put into, hey, we're talking about TOD or TDD in your area? That's just common courtesy. And I think it's very, I think it's just wrong not to inform the residents that are directly affected instead of them seeing their houses inside these green zones. I think you guys should change that a little bit and let people know. And I hear Leanne talked about, hey, down at Main Street, there is houses in here and they weren't supposed to be in there. So they have people fighting for down at Main Street, but nobody's fighting for up here by Stan's, by Ridge Road. So, so what's happening there? You know, it's just, it's just not right. They should at least be informed and have, and know what's going on so they know what their options are.
Thank you very much. And again, I'll be around after, we could talk a little more. And again, if you both can, if nothing else, if I If you both can, if nothing else, if I leave before you guys leave, make sure we leave your names and numbers and get you contacted, okay? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So, impact analysis, so this kind of is born out of a conversation. That we've had, you know, kind of with, with Dustin and his team. About concerns in the community and in particular, how does the community want to grow? Uh, so as, as we think about that, you know, what are some of those concerns? And if there's other concerns that we have in fact, please let us know, but population growth, potential impact to schools. Uh, ability of, of current infrastructure to support future economic development projects. The ability to attract quality develop events and developers, community. What that land use mix is and how that meshes with the town's goals. Uh, property values, preserving property values, financing property values. And uh, what kind of traffic in, are these developments expected to bring? And so how, how can we be sensitive to this? There's really a couple of ways that we thought through this process that we could, number one. It's, you know, kind of going through this process with all of you having this conversation. Uh, but then also, you know, how do we maintain existing character of the community and understand that that's important? How do we visualize and quantify potential impacts of TOD development in certain parts of the community? And how do we mitigate or prevent impacts that would be negative uh to the school system? So demographics, so it's, it's important to think about where the town is today, where the town has been, where the town is going. And our sources for this demographics information is US Census based, we also use a software called PSRI. Uh, which is a kind of a demographics and economic forecasting software, that's why we use the industry, so. You can see um, the, you know, the town's population today is, it's just shy of twenty-four thousand. Nineteen eighty is around twenty, uh, and uh, so it's grown, you know, substantially over, over that period of time. But what we think is important to note, uh, at least as, as kind of the, the demographics are, are showing is, is as the town. Has run out of a, a lot of greenfield type property um for new uh development. Growth has slowed, we also know nationally that our communities are aging. And uh, and a lot of people are choosing to age in place. Families are smaller, so the growth trajectory of Munster as the demographics show have slowed and. We were able to pull an estimate for twenty twenty-six, which um, we, we would ask folks to kind of. Take with a, or an asterisk or a caveat uh that, you know, maybe the population could decline, now that's a projection, so. We know that there's still some sites that are available for residential development and it's unlikely better to decline. But uh, we did want to just point that out as uh, that was an estimate that we were able to pull. So you want to add to that there?
No, I, I think that because land has been consumed by other development. This is not a probably that surprising of a statistic, but it just does point to. The fact that with your remaining money, you want to be very strategic um with how you grow, because this is sort of the last. Six hundred acres or so that haven't been developed or um, and the community that you really want to take carefully about. Because as your, as your community. Evolves and changes, your costs are not going to go down. Costs are going to continue to stay high, your services are going to remain the way they are. You have other projects in mind that you would like to do as a community, but with a lack of growth. You have to be very careful with how you balance costs and revenues.
Talked a little bit about uh how communities are changing from a, a demographics perspective and. Thanks Eric. We're going to try to minimize the. Yeah, would you mind hitting minimize on that? Thank you. Now we can see that information a little bit better.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, so we're, we're comparing this to Indiana, uh, so median age Munster. Uh, you can see that, that Munster is, is aging as a, a lot of our, our communities in Indiana, the Midwest in the, the, the country are. And so the, the median age uh in years as of, of kind of this census year is forty-five point three. Uh, it's projected to grow uh by that twenty twenty-six number, which is an estimate again. Um, by three years, so you're starting to get to a point where um. You know, a lot of families will, will be in a place where their kids will. Be in high school or, or maybe college, and so again, smaller families uh within the community. Uh, your population of sixty-five plus is growing. Uh, as a community and it is larger than the state average, I think part of that has to do with the fact that. Uh, Munster is a community where people do want to age in place and, you know, it's a, it's a community that people choose to live in, there's a lot of amenities in this community, so. I, I think that that's part of the equation as well.
How, how do you, and, and again, data shows one for sure. My three houses that sold in my area have all been retired people that move out. And the people that move in have kids. You know, and, and again, I, I'm not arguing the data, but you know, it just. It just seems that way, is there, is there data that can show that people that are moving in are younger kids? You know, is, is there additional data that can confirm or detract or, yeah, the, the other people that are moving in only have one point two kids compared to two point three kids that are leaving or. Or something to that effect, uh, because again, it, it is kind of funny because. I, I've heard it also that, again, uh, average number of families, the, the number of kids and families have gone down over the years too, you know. But again, it just seems like it, it, the three houses sold by a neighbor or, or the retired people moving out and other families moving in.
But you also have people like me that had five people in my house five years ago and I don't, I only have two now. Cause they're, they're all out of, and I'm still there, but I've lost over half of my population out of my household.
Right, that's a good point, right?
Might be, is you notice when someone leaves, right, like on my block, I've got, let's just call it. Twenty houses. Now, I could tell you the, the houses with the kids because my kids are over there, I don't know if I could tell you who lives in the other fifteen, right? It might be, who should judge it?
It, it's like Brian's saying, my, my family, in, in the last five years, I've had two kids not go to high school anymore, they've gone to college. So now I have three kids in high, in, in the school system, in the last five years, now I only have one. So there's a, there's a natural detraction of people that are living, okay?
But that's kind of always in the, I mean, if you look around, I mean.
It has, but the, I think what's important to notice here is that. The folks are staying in the community, so you're staying in the community.
I'm not, I'm not moving out, yeah, I'm not moving out to see my kids.
So the age is getting older in the community. Which is the, I guess the best way to describe the content of this slide is that. There, that, as your kids move out, hopefully they move back, somewhere back into the community, or, or your kids.
My kids aren't moving back.
Statistics.
My kids aren't moving back, they're gone.
Right, and, and that's I think, is what the data suggests behind some of that anecdotal information.
Thank you, I think that helps.
Other demographics that are important to call out, so employment, we know that this is. A community where there is quite a bit of employment, especially in the healthcare sector, uh, office, professional office, educational and retail. Uh, so we think about uh the community, you know, there are quite a few jobs, uh, there are more jobs in the, the Bridge Road area. So within that uh TDD boundary than that, uh, within uh the Main Street Station area. Um, you can see the town overall has about eleven, just shy of twelve thousand jobs, which is good. And, and the median household income in, uh, the town of Munster is higher than that state average by quite a bit. And the, and another thing to call out uh is, and we'll talk about it here in a moment, but. Uh, there are certain segments of the population that have an even higher income statistic. So how do we compare this to transit oriented development? I apologize for the, the pink text being a little bit small, but I will kind of explain those different data points. So w- within kind of a national average, uh, there's quite a bit of density um within a half mile of transit sheds if we think about. TOD nationally, I mean, that takes every community from Los Angeles to Spokane, Washington, to Pittsburgh, to Orland Park, Illinois, right? In the Munster area, we were able to estimate there's about uh six thousand residents around the, the two Munster stations today together. But what we also know uh through these statistics is, so town uh residents already have a, a pretty high. Wage um comparatively to the region or the state, uh, and within TOD districts. Typically people are of a, a higher wage, um, you'd be attracting uh people that. Might be um, in the future, you know, smaller households, so. It could be an option for, as, as we think about some of the smaller families or some of the people looking to downsize. Really, you know, thinking about different uh housing opportunities around TOD with smaller units. Uh, we think about that as a way to attract recent college grads, we heard some people, their kids aren't moving back, maybe they'd like to, if, if there was a place that. Um, could suit their needs a, as they grow and, and that this really. Uh, could act as a kind of a means to get people interested in the community, get people solidified in the community, living in the community. And then over time, as their families grow, um, they get married, et cetera. Your single family housing stock could have almost kind of the next generation of, of people that, that would like to live there. Median age, we talked about the median age in Munster being about forty-five and growing in the next several years up to forty-eight. And per national statistics in a TOD area, you are seeing the younger people um moving i- i- into these areas. And one thing I was able to segment out is particular to Munster, um, as part of the latest census. Uh, median household income per person's age twenty-five to thirty-three is actually a hundred and seventy-five. So this again cements the fact that, that the people that would be moving into a TOD area in Munster likely would be of. A high wage earning category. And you'd want to attract more of those people if you could, because again, we think about the TDD districts, taxes. Uh, but then we also think about preserving uh and enhancing the value of single family homes in the neighborhood. We, we want to attract that next generation of people who live in those neighborhoods.
Those average age people twenty-five to thirty-three. They make a lot of money, a hundred and seven thousand dollars, where do they live?
Well, that's actually specific to Munster today.
Oh, that, that is.
That is a Munster statistic. And the reason I called that out is it, it was actually a. A good statistic, it shows that the people moving into the community of, are of a relatively high wage.
Does it say if those people are married and have kids, or are they just saying?
It did not specify that.
What you can see is that generally within this TOD areas, you know, forty-three percent or so. So on average, it's probably people.
Okay.
So what you're saying is our median age in town is. Forty-five. Forty-five.
I think I, yeah, forty-five point three, yeah.
In the US it's thirty-eight, but around these transit centers usually it's much lower, about four and a half years younger, so our forty. You could make that. We build up and have people who want to live by transit. We can impact that median age of residents here and that will also bring up the. Just based on the type of residence and that age range, that will also bring up. The median household income in Munster and that will be all captured in TOD if we're building places for people to live in the, in the TDD.
Absolutely, yeah. The other statistic here that I will call out, uh. So two point one people per household average, so smaller household size around TOD. Six, suggests impacts to schools might be lower than that of your single family developments that might have larger families. Another statistic that I thought was a little bit interesting though was, uh, so Munster, about thirty percent of. Munster households have children at school ages, uh, and, and the statistic is actually higher within TOD areas, so. That may just be a little bit of an incorrect statistic there and that. Uh, the national average for communities um with kids less than eighteen years of age or school age. Um, is higher, but we do think that, um, you know. As, as you think about these TOD areas, it is a place where if you look at the demographics, uh, where people are moving in, they could soon. Start families and start to be adding to, to that demographic.
I think the explanation for that might be the gray text below eighteen years old, because. What it suggests is that US households are forty percent of US households have children younger than eighteen years of age. Here in Munster, that's only thirty percent, so, and that's due to the older demographic we described earlier. So somewhere in the middle or more closer to that US average is what you would expect.
There's a lot of data points on this slide, are there any questions?
Is there anything to do with crime in around TOD or train, uh, train stations or any of that kind of stuff? I don't have that statistic today that we can find, if, if you can find that type of statistic, that would be. Interesting to look at, yeah.
As I look at the data here, I wonder like what is the ideal set of demographics? That we should think about that secures the future of the town and fits what our vision is. Is it more like what is, or rather than asking that, just how do you think about when you look at health and community with their demographics? Well, it's sort of, the way I always think about it is, you don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. No matter what we're talking about, if you're talking about industry, if you're talking about age, population, that sort of stuff. You, you don't want to have all of your eggs in one basket, so you want to have a diverse industry, you do here in terms of employment sectors. Aaron showed the kind of nice uh sort of uniform distribution of jobs across a lot of different sectors, that's healthy. Um, I think of the same as uh when we talk about age groups too. You want to make sure that you have a nice cycle of age happening in the community at any given time. You're going to need to have dollars being spent in your community flowing through families that are here today. Different people in different age groups have different preferences and that provides for a stronger local economy. You know, if, if everybody's sort of aging in your community, um, I think it will limit some of your economic growth and your local business growth as well, so. In general, healthy communities tend to be diverse in terms of age and the kind of employment sectors that are um there. Where we see trouble in certain communities where some of those things are out of line, I'm not suggesting most, in that spot, but you do with the remaining round, that's sort of. Interesting. Yeah, I can walk through this, but before we move on out of that last slide, were there any other questions, comments? Was a lot of data, so. The, oh sorry, the twenty-two to thirty-five age range is kind of a specific question. Is our distribution like really tiny versus what you would expect and we ought to grow that? As far as this, you know, that segment, is it the right size?
I will find that data, we can send it to you, I can't remember exactly, it was just one of those things that just really stood out to me. As a data point.
As you look at the town like. We're, we're in the midst of passing new upgrades. For water, stormwater, wastewater management. And as, as you look at the ability to upgrade infrastructure and generate revenue, so we can. Come what it is, you can, well, what levers do we have that we can pull? And if that one is undersized and we can focus on that sort of. You know, future, enticing that sort of future residents, that gives us a lot more economic power. Actually save the residents who are living here. So we talked earlier about a single family housing and and that we've attempted to. Keep the districts outside of single family housing areas to preserve that it's a community character here in Munster. And because as David mentioned earlier, they really don't add to the increment within the T D Ds. So outside of single family housing, when we think about attracting new residents. Maybe they are the twenty-two to thirty-five age range, or maybe they're your kids when they move out, that they still want to be in Munster. But there's nowhere for them to live.
Or somewhere else with kids from those from in college.
Right, right, somebody who's.
You don't like my kids?
Or or people who have the big twenty-five hundred, three thousand square foot, four thousand square foot home. And it's instead of five people now, it's two, you know, they want to still maybe be here too, but maybe there isn't a, so. We we look at the spectrum of housing that can accommodate all types of ages of folks. On the one end is the single family, we all are very familiar with that, on the other end of that is kind of mid-rise apartment buildings that. I think you've seen developed in a lot of communities, including Munster, that that are very common. In the middle there are all these other types of of housing options that. A lot of developers are beginning to key uh key in on because they are able to fill this. Demand for housing in our communities. And and they can do that while remaining in character with the community, so that sort of segment of housing. And there are lots of different types of housing and what you would see if you look really carefully throughout Munster and Northwest Indiana in general. You would see a lot of that housing in different areas, usually it was built before the nineteen forties. But sometime after the forties, when when cars were more sort of prevalent. The 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 development patterns changed by the more suburban style patterns and so we we lost a lot of this. Pattern over those years, but developers are now beginning to build a lot more of this because they can work on smaller lots. Without assembling large, large pieces of ground and they can still get two, four, six, eight units on a smaller piece of property. And do that in character with the existing community fabric, so there are lots of sort of. Different types of housing that we put into this category that's commonly called the missing mill. Missing mill being that just haven't been built over the last fifty or sixty years. The other issue with. You know, the the absence of this housing is a lot of zoning codes have sort of made it very difficult for this to get built. Because zoning is adapted to suburban style development and in a lot of ways, it's very difficult for a developer to. To do a project that fits within one of these categories, now you all are in a little better spot for that, given your zoning updates. But other communities are not, other communities are adapting their zone to allow for more of this type of housing. Duplexes, fourplexes, courtyard buildings, cottage courts. Townhouses, multiplexes, stacked units and then live working, these are all different sort of combinations of. Living and working that are pretty successful.
I I just wanted to say, I, because I know this is, this is what we've heard. We keep hearing, I've heard this, you know, many times and. I feel like that we're being not lumped in, that sounds negative, but when you say none of this housing has been built. It's since nineteen forties, if you look at, okay, so in my neighborhood, for instance, we had duplexes until they D bought them and. For them down and took those lots because they had to, so our, so that one subdivision was going to have single family. And duplexes and you have, we have townhomes over in, I don't think. I don't think that's true, maybe we don't have a a live work and maybe we don't have a mega apartment complex. But we do, if you look at every single neighborhood, I think, where am I thinking of? Yeah, you got that going up and true, you got that going up in Centennial, you have. Townhouses in in all, every subdivision, so I don't really think that's.
And I think, no, I think that's my point too, is that you all have this in your community. It is already sort of in the fabric of Munster, maybe not to the same percentage or proportion as single family. But this is.
But I don't know that we need that people move here for a single family home, you know, I mean. I've got a couple behind me, they moved, young couple built a house, four hundred thousand dollars or at least and they said they. Like, I mean, they're not necessarily looking for smaller, denser areas.
But, you know, are are you saying that we already have this housing in Munster?
I'm saying that a lot of times when we see these presentations, it says you need to change your zoning so that you can do this, but it seems like. Change your zone so it can be in a dense, in a dense area where we offer a lot of different types of housing in Munster. It just isn't around in the area where we're talking about, they're not, like, you can get a townhome somewhere in Munster. You see, I mean, because we're talking about the T O D area, I don't think that we need to have. That kind of density next, I it it being presented as if we don't have different types of housing, we do. So what they really are prescribing, I think, is that type of housing in two spots. When we actually, we being the train stations, we actually already built.
But i- if a developer would come into our town now and say, hey, we want to build this row of townhomes. You know, and hey, we got this cool concept for townhomes and. Is is that something that we should consider or not consider or?
No, I'm not saying, I, if you change it, I think it should be case by case, because if you change your code to just say. This can be built there, if they're not looking for a variance outside of the building materials, there's really no, you have no control. And that's why we put that hole on the zoning code is so that we can back up and say, listen, we want to have, we don't want it just to be. This is allowed here, so therefore it can be done, I I mean, I'm just saying that. Some places might not have that type of housing, but we do, so let's not act like we don't have housing for. A lot of different people, a lot of different situations.
I'm just remembering to back to the beginning of the presentation, so let's keep like big picture and the vision and how this is a. Once in a generation or once in a lifetime opportunity, there's, I think, a seven hundred fifteen million dollar investments. Coming to this Westlake extension, which is like. I guess when I ran for the council, I knew that was going on, but this is not something that happens in every community all over the time. I think what I'm hearing is that we have this sort of housing in the fabric of the town, it is Munster, like behind the. Where Michigan is, all those, there's row homes and things that are really cool and so. We're also, we are facing like it's. It's hard to ask residents who live here to pay a lot more for water and infrastructure at the one Munster roads built up. So as we have the chance to take advantage of the seven hundred fifteen million dollar investment that we've brought down. In our community to the extent that exists, let's look at putting in not just something on the on the left. Uh, around these train stations so that we can get those twenty-five to thirty-three year old people here who don't. Burden the schools, they're going to move into the, into Brian's home when he, you know, retires and moves into a nice condo and.
It's a, it's a continuum, you're right, it's a way for people who want to stay here, to still live here, but they want to downsize.
At your point, I think there's like six hundred acres that we have left to develop, so how do we be really strategic? And not be bound by what we've done in the past or what other communities do, but like what is actually what we need looking for the next. Looking for our current residents and.
And those six hundred acres are for the most part along commercial corridors, keep that in mind as well. You know, that is the concentration of property, generally speaking, outside of the big Nick department lot of Main Street. Those big areas that do remain are not within the neighborhoods.
Well, I think it to to your point that, well, where we say we're going to, our expenses are going up. And we need more people to share that. With more building, with more density will come more expenses, so where is your, is the, is the difference this big? Or is it this big, so it just because we're going to generate more revenue or more people to pay doesn't mean that the cost is going to go down for first.
Yeah, actually on that point it will, because the development is on a much smaller footprint. So the more, more people on a smaller, smaller area.
That's, that's the. I know, that's what's being shot, but we, do we have a ton of?
We will, actually we'll show that at the end of the presentation, we have a bit of an an analysis of development. Intensity and how that can play out over different thresholds.
On the property tax issue, because most of this is property tax with work cash. So if we put a fourplex up. Are we eating four times property tax? As opposed to a single family house?
Yeah, David, maybe you can speak to the assessment.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it depends on what type of house you would put up there versus a duplex, so it's. A, the assessment of a fourplex would be for the entire structure. Versus the individual units, so it would probably be, there's, so it's not, it's not necessarily going to be four times a single family.
Well, that that was my point, so we're really, it's diminishing returns, the more units you put up, because it's really based on. Or lack of better words, square footage of that unit, however many units it is.
And it depends on whether you condos or apartment, make them apartments too.
Right, exactly.
Can you say again what? The the property tax from a single family four thousand square foot house compared to a. Duplex that has, that's the same size lot or whatever else, is is property tax about the same on those or? And again, I I if I'm bad analogy or bad comparison, I'm not trying to put you in a corner.
No, I mean, I I, there's just lots of. Lots of variables.
Yes, I know.
But it's, but it's, it's not going to be four copies. Okay, I I would admit, I would assume and I would project, if you will, that the assessment of the. Of the quad home or the or the town home is going to be greater than a single family home. But it's not going to be four copies.
I got you.
And you keep in mind that the single families can't be captured as.
And and single families can't be captured.
I think if I may, one other thing to think about is not necessarily a trade off between single family homes versus a. Fourplex or whatever, because with respect to the T D D, we're not including single family residential areas. So it's really a trade off between, say. You know, a store with a large parking lot in front of it versus something that's much more. Compact and densely developed on on a commercial site.
Yeah. And again, I I I look back at that previous slide and and again. I I guess I look at a lot of that middle of housing and I I think back to when they redeveloped the naval base of the Glendale. You know, and they put the Glenn in it, in different types of townhomes, duplexes and things like that and and how that. Created then the energy for some of the businesses in that area as as being a potential. Site and again, I don't know if we have anything that big to redevelop, you know, because that that was a huge area, the naval base, but up there, but again, that. You know, what what I see up there is really a a pretty sharp looking, look to everything and and so.
Well, and I think when you see some of the planning scenarios that we include in this presentation, you'll see that the areas of land we're talking about are not. Very big. And and so to to Tom's point, the real trade off in a lot of these areas is, you know, a big parking lot. Small commercial building versus something that could be more. More dense, but not in all areas, but that is generally speaking kind of the trade off now, areas around Main Street, maybe a little bit different. So we'll show you some scenarios.
Okay.
And if I can add one more point. Tom made me think of, he said that, the circuit breakers are different as well, again, a single family home and a. A quad home or, okay, where on a quad home, it's going to be, you're going to be in the two percent circuit breaker, so the. So more revenue is going to be generated from from that versus a single family home at a one percent.
Isn't that only for rentals, two percent, I thought two percent was rentals, not multi, just multi? Is that right? Two, the 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 property tax, I thought one percent's for residential, but I thought. I thought the two percent was only for rentals, or is it for multi?
It'd be multi.
It is?
So if I own a quad, I pay two percent? Yes, okay. Thank you.
So this series of images just kind of expand a little bit upon what we just looked at. Some of these images actually very well could have been taken at Munster, because to Leanne's point, some of this exists here today. But just to hit on one, one point here, you know, it does, this whole notion of different kinds of housing. Does help folks to cycle through the community, if you live here, do you want? You know, if you want to downsize, there are there are additional options, if you grew up here, you moved away, you want to come back, there are different options. Outside of the, to Leanne's point, the four hundred thousand dollar single family house. So this is just a little bit more detail about what those things really look like, I think, unless there are questions, we can. We talked about this too, that.
I'm just thinking, since everyone talks about their family, my parents moved out of Munster to Parrot Villas, you know, in Crumple. Uh, which are kind of like the side by side. And I think we had the point you made, there were Parrot Villas right by the train station that were taken down. And to the extent we want to build things up, have it captured in the T O D. Get two percent versus one percent and have more expensive, the more expensive the structure is, you put up there, the more property tax generates, revenue generates over the time. Wouldn't that mean that we would actually want that area by the train station as part of the. T O D so that we could have flexibility to build more things like this?
The one down at Main Street.
Right, yeah. I think where the, where those homes already existed and were needed to be taken out of the track.
If those lots have already, I mean, they're, people are, if you go down there, they're building, I mean, they took all those, all those are gone, they took, I can't remember how many lots. Yeah, no, when he's talking about in Main Street, but you already have. How, I mean, there's like, there's lumber out, they're building a house now, so how, I mean.
There was that, that type of living was available there, now it's no longer available.
Yeah, but it's being, I mean, what are you going to tear down the house that was built yesterday to build a? I mean, I guess you could, but.
That wasn't my, that wasn't my suggestion.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm saying it's being built, right, like there are people are flooding the, and like the lots are going, houses are going up constantly now. Because they know the trains, so. I think that that ship may have sailed.
Yeah, so, and I want to keep this moving along because this is the real exciting stuff, so. If we're, we've been talking about this, you know, there there's not a lot, a lot of property left in the community to develop in a town. So approximately ten point six percent of Munster's land area is within a transit development district boundary. So that's important to note, the Ridge Road area, three ten acres, at the Main Street area, about two hundred of that three sixteen is in. Munster, so you know, your your total T D D area is just north of five hundred fifteen acres and these are. As we looked at your whole community, some of the areas that that we feel are ripe. For economic development opportunities in the future, we also looked at other vacant. Parcels of land, we looked at the entirety of kind of the landmass of Munster. And really, and this is vacant, this is not just redevelopment, there's one hundred eighty-nine or so acres of. Vacant vacant land in Munster and within the T D D areas, one hundred and thirty-seven acres of that, so. So that's, that's kind of the point we're making here, is there's not a lot of available property. Within the T O D areas, you can see here in in kind of pink, what we would consider prime or or kind of. Opportunity areas where we we've actually done some very high level testing for various densities of development. It's about fifteen percent of your transit district boundaries. And so we'll start with Ridge Road.
No, 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 keep on going, because I think you're going to get to the point, the question, so.
Within the Ridge Road area. Within the Ridge Road area, if we don't, please let us know. There's about 43.7 acres of TOD, what we would call kind of areas within a close walkable distance of the station that could, if the private development community wanted to, wanted to work with various property owners to develop properties in future with, of course, the, the consent and, and kind of the land use, you know, regulations of, of the city. You, you know, we could kind of see that kind of development occurring. And then as far as office and commercial within the Ridge Road TDD area, we did include the Lansing Country Club area, which is just shy of 60 acres that could develop as office and commercial.
When you say available, 43.7, is that vacant?
No. It, available is probably not the best word. It, it would be an area that we would see as having substantial
Potential.
Potential or opportunity for development if the private development community were to, you know, work with those property owners.
And that makes sense because those are clustered right at the station. The one outlier is the large parking lot to the west at Ridge Road there, in the kind of rhombus shape.
That's the, that's the old Jones Clinic.
Right, yeah, exactly. So that's the outlier there, but for the most part, it's right at the intersection of the, the train lines.
And again, this is, this is what, just because of sheer location and, and these are, a lot of these areas are owned privately by other people that we have no control over.
Exactly. Yeah, and let me, let me also say, the way, the reason we even put a boundary up here in the first place and assigned a new bridge is so that we can give you a sense of, let's say somebody did mobilize, they want to develop 43 acres, it's likely not going to happen anytime soon, but let's say they did at different thresholds of development, what could you expect?
Yeah.
So that's, that's why we sort of drew a boundary. That boundary could be different configurations altogether, and it will be different configurations altogether. But for the purpose of showing you different scenarios, we had to draw some boundaries.
So for each of these, you know, thinking about those, those areas in pink that we talked about, those opportunity areas, what we did were some high level concepts, we'll share those here in a moment, but what we really want to focus on is densities. And so what we're calling a, a low density type development, you can see character images here, you know, this is a, a similar density to what you have in, in, you know, along Ridge Road or other areas of your community. It's, it's kind of that one to two to three story type development. It might include ground floor retail office, upper floor, potentially commercial, potentially residential, and kind of a live work type setting. You could also see, you know, in the bottom right image, the kind of streetscape you all have envisioned for the Ridge Road area. And as we're thinking about impacts of, of this kind of development, which would be kind of a low density scenario, so on the bottom right of that slide, you can see potential impacts. And so what we did was actually factored in, and we'll compare all these at the end of the deck, but what we've been able to do is use kind of standard dynamics and precedent set, set elsewhere in the country with TOD development to understand a potential impact for future residents if this whole area was built out, so that 43 acres, you know, at this density. And so you could add about a thousand residents, just shy of, of 200 kids to the school corporation. And this is, you know, of course, going to take years to build out if that occurs. You know, there's a range of potential employees between kind of 150 and 300. And then, you know, these would have vehicle trips, including the numbers that NICP has provided for the lot, which is just shy of the, the 7,000 range, which is still within kind of the realm of what your streetscape is designed for. And just to give you a sense of, of kind of how this development lays out, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but it would be surface park. It would be modest in scale, especially as it steps into the neighborhood. And, and there could be various mixes of, of housing in this area, as well as some commercial, some office, as well as mixed use.
I think what you'll see in the different scenarios is that, that the higher density, if you will, would be along the road. And as you step to the neighborhoods, it goes down into some of the, this is middle housing that we talked about, that can transition back into a single family.
Which said that you're proposing Jones Clinic, is that a certain, was it residential or was it business?
Jones Clinic. So just keep in mind, these are, these are not proposals. These are, we, for the purposes of putting numbers together, we needed to have a visual of some kind. Whatever could happen there, you know, we're, I guess, we're, this is one scenario that suggests there could be some housing there. But more to the point, we tried to target a density here, a density, not so much a development proposal, but a density that would be based upon one to two stories and surface parking.
How does that density compare to our character code density when we start talking about five and a half acre, you know, people per acre and is, is there a way that we can combine those two discussions about density? So we have a nice picture that we can not compare apples to oranges?
I was, well, I guess in this, in the CD four district, CD four A, which is kind of like the outskirts probably of this, not including Manor Avenue or Harrison to the north. The density is 12 units per acre. Within the CD five district, it's 96 units per acre. So it's a lot denser than what is shown here. I don't know if the 12 units is similar to this.
This is, this is pretty consistent with current development patterns in Munster. That's the best way for us to describe.
So this would be less than 12 units. And again, I'm not even sure what that means, but I'm just trying to, when we go on to the next conversation, we understand what that.
This is an illustration of TOD that in a pretty low density.
Okay. Or, but we see, we see mixed use or, you know, yeah, mixed use development and it's still going to be low density.
Right.
From, from that terminology.
This is maybe a little less dense than Centennial Village. This is.
Okay.
Probably this, the median.
That, thank you. That's, that's the only thing I have in my mind.
And this.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, help please.
One thing that's important that you said is that the drawings are illustrative, right? Just to kind of get to some map and draw pictures.
Yes.
Because I can imagine, you know, when you're sitting here and you're, you've got a, a sort of drawing over your lands. Conversation of that's kind of scary, right?
For sure.
Just to, that we're clear. And also, we need to think as council, when we're doing the comprehensive plan and the community outreach and everything, that we're getting input from the people who look at this map and say, that's my life, that's my history, my kids and things. So I think that was an important comment that, that you made. And just for us, so we need to be awful about how we do that. You can get excited about all the things that are going on and maybe lose, right?
And that goes for every piece of property that is on that map, whether it's residential or commercial.
Are you, I guess, you're not proposing anything, but in that, you described it all as surface parking, where there's not any parking garages or community parking garages or anything like that you're doing at all.
It's site specific parking for any particular development.
Correct. This next scenario, I mean, I would say that this is a similar density to that Centennial Village. We actually looked at that as, as we were putting together this. It's the same properties that we looked at in the first scenario, but you can see as, as your density gets to step up to that, you know, three to four story type threshold, so that of, of, you know, kind of similar to what your design code would allow for. Your impacts here, you know, you're now more than 1,000 residents. You're, you know, just north of 150 families with school age kids. Your employees, there's a big range here just because there's a, a lot of different ways that you could develop this real estate, but you, you start to get more employees coming to this area as well.
So employees, can we think of those as like new jobs in Munster?
Yes.
Well, there are jobs that are out there today, but not near to that number.
Not entirely incremental.
It's, it's not added.
And we've got a comparison at the end, right? And then kind of in a similar way, you know, again, just a sketch of how development could lay out. In, in this particular instance, there, there might be some parking decks.
One parking structure looks like north of Ridge Road there. Or a couple north.
And again, just illustrative only, just to kind of get.
And go back to that slide. Okay, so you did, okay, so that yellow piece, yeah, and then I know, we're, we're not trying to put pieces in there, you know, specific things, but that, that part property off of Manor, in, in this situation, you're looking at the yellow, and again, you're not really looking, proposing single family housing.
Those could be row houses.
Row houses.
Maybe more like.
Okay, so that's how we can read some of that scale or the.
Yeah, those tiny, they look like chiplets up there.
Yeah.
Those are probably row houses, row houses, they could be duplexes, something that scales back down. And in, in any of these, I think in any of these scenarios, however, a developer would come to you and say, hey, I want to do something, you'd want to consider scaling it down and do this.
And the parking structure that is also imaginary, which is where, where do we see?
So you see one, well, the two development sites north of Ridge Road, there, there's an orange kind of U shape west of Manor. That's, thank you, in there, those two are.
There goes the presentation.
We're good.
Those two could be.
Could be parked.
Yeah, they're concealed though. So you notice they're wrapped around.
And then higher density development, you know, this is probably more than what your code would allow today. So we're thinking of more of, of five stories, you know, this is where you start to get a larger impact. We just wanted to show kind of these different scales of of potential impact and character that, that might be associated with, again, different levels of development. And again, you're, you know, north of 2,000 employees, or yeah, I'm sorry, residents, 400 school age kids, you know, 350 to almost 700 employees in.
And, and again, that's if that whole area could be that.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and this is just for us to see the, the concepts.
Yeah.
And.
And, and it's more to establish thresholds actually, because as you see next, we've tried to translate those thresholds into revenues.
And vehicle trips, how should we contemplate, like what's the impact of more vehicle trips?
Well, as Aaron mentioned earlier, we can confirm on, on the high density scheme, but the, the low density scheme and the medium density scheme, because we, we know to fit within that Ridge Road sort of capacity, we would double check the.
This is just driving traffic volumes.
Right, yeah, right. There's capacity today at Ridge Road. And so this would fit within what the, the street can handle.
So this is a comparison slide, but I'm going to keep going because we'll, we'll get to that here in a moment. We'll kind of compare all of these together once we get to Main Street. We haven't forgotten about the, the Lansing Country Club, future development, an office, commercial perspective. And just so you all know, we were able to run some numbers, order of magnitude numbers about that area as well. You know, that, that of course is a great employment opportunity within the town of Munster. And, and you could see, you know, upwards of 1,000 employees, even closer to 3,000 employees there with a significant amount of vehicle trips.
And because it's all in the TD, oh, only if they live there right now and whatnot, until they've changed.
But to your point, Steve, the people who live there might be in that 22 to 35 inch range, and they need, maybe someplace walkable to where they work. And it could be within the TDs just down, down the train, down the line.
Right.
So, so consider that too.
And the vehicle trips are, field of trips that, that piece of property is generating to and from.
Based on the employment numbers. All right, so going through the same process for the Main Street area, we looked at particularly the, the site that NICP is going to build their parking as well as the adjacent acreage, which of course is all greenfield today. And so, you know, 35 acres and then there's a, a large parcel of property. It says 69.88 acres on the map. There's actually that parcel and then one more parcel up on the top of the map that's actually being covered by the, by the bar right about where we see that chat thing. But we looked in particular at, you know, how could this site develop in a couple of different ways? And then also, you know, how how could, you know, this development maybe get phased? And, and how does the town kind of think through that? So if NICP is building a surface lot, how does that lot eventually turn into a joint development opportunity? So a little bit different opportunity, it's, it's more focused on kind of one piece of property, as we would call it. Of course, there's two, two owners to this parcel. In the lowest density concept, you know, we really are thinking, you know, maybe, you know, some fairly dense, small lot type, single family housing within this area. Maybe a, a, a small amount of either duplex or townhome type units, a low scale of commercial density that, that really could service the neighborhood as well as the transit users. So think of a small brewery or restaurant or commercial development. So fairly modest at scale, this is how that could lay out. This is thinking through though the notion that the NICP lot does develop as joint development. Of course, you would need to build a parking structure to accommodate the, the NICP, you know, area turning into development. But as you'll see here in a few moments, these developments could occur kind of as one thought phased over time, or the development site on the, the west could actually develop potentially first with follow on development in the NICP lot area as, as demand increases. So we go to the second threshold of density, again, similar level of density to that of Centennial Village. We do think that this is probably a place where the town could consider attracting some of those other unit types. So where we had condo, townhome, maybe even some multi family in these areas. This is, you know, right at the transit station. So the notion of live work and live work play, you know, really, I think could be, could be good here. This is again, another opportunity to kind of create a district. And so your number of residences are increasing with kind of a focus on, on kind of townhome type development to the the west. And you can kind of see how that lays out. In this scenario, the NICP lot would also, you know, be developed in, in kind of a, a little bit denser fashion, and it would require a structured parking for NICP's commuters.
So, let me, so you, this is where they originally have their plans for the parking. So you're saying instead of having that parking, we build a parking garage and then develop it?
There's a concept that is being utilized in Michigan City today called joint development. And so there is a mechanism if, you know, if, if the town or developer were to go to NICP with a proposal that, that they could work together as a group to realize development that could occur on a site, but still provide for the commuter parking instead of a, a large surface lot.
Is that the $80 million project that's in, over the news? And what role did you all play in that?
We weren't involved with that, actually. That was more on the RDA side of things, a couple of other consults, but we, we did not, the RDA has been involved with that.
So the last development scenario was for is, is something denser. And if, if you want to Google Bridge Park in Dublin, Ohio, some of those images are, are from that. It's a kind of a suburb, Columbus. And so this is a little denser development. It would be kind of that walkable mixed use type development that could have generate, could generate a, a significant amount of people to locate. This would be more of a destination type development. And this would kind of not have kind of the western area of the site developed as part of a townhome or single family development. This would be your denser mixed use development with likely some multi family in here as well as some office. Now again, this would be the most aggressive effort. So this would take a lot of coordination with, with NICP the property owners to the west, right off the bat.
And how could that work with the dire, this is, oh, I just hit the.
You're all good. Communicate or work with. You can see that, you can see that the road south of, where you see the two black lines come to a V, almost enough upside down V. That road goes down into dire to the south, but we're not making that connection.
There could be a. There could be a connection, though, further south, there's the Seminary property, which is another large site that the town of Dire is interested in, and the Seminary is interested in some.
If this meeting were in dire now, you're talking about.
Yeah.
Below that.
Right.
Similar drawing.
You can see as well, we're not indicating connections to the north either.
Yeah, or the west. So, you know, how, how this development begins to stack out, you can start to see, you know, the, the range of impacts from a residential employee households with kids and trips perspective, if NICD's traffic again is factored in here. But this, this last series of slides maybe thinks through this scenario a little differently. And so this would be taking kind of the medium-density and presupposing that the property to the west, which is not controlled by NICD, were to be developed independently, but as part of kind of a master plan development along with the NICD lots. You could see the NICD parking lots as kind of the parkings they're building currently. And then you'll see an area in green, kind of in the middle of the screen next to the blue area, which is a pond, that would show kind of where NICD could do future parking. So the scenario here is the development to the west could occur first. Then, over time, this joint development mechanism could be worked out with NICD, where it be a private developer could come in and develop that site that NICD doesn't intend to develop until they need more parking in 2040. And then as that garage is built, it can allow for another lot to go offline, because that commuter parking is being provided within the development area. And, and this could kind of continue in, in a couple of different formats, but this just shows conceptually the idea of, you know, if there were a phased development approach with this Main Street site, how could that play out? And if the town had a desire to kind of minimize the number of surface lots in this area, that would be a strategy to do so. And then the last one we'll share, and we're coming to the end of the slide deck, so bear with us for a few more moments. But we did look at kind of a large site, greenfield site, that does include some residential properties, although most of those residential properties are owned by a couple of different investor entities, as we can tell on the county GIS. So we do think that that area could develop based on information from the prior conference plan, as well as some ideas that we've received, that this probably likely could be an office or medical type use. And again, you could generate a significant amount of employees from, from the site as well, within that TDD boundary. So how do all these things begin to stack out? So you, you can kind of see here how if we add up all the TOD and kind of both the areas, as well as the office, which of course is, is just kind of looking at one constant threshold of development in each area. And I should mention that the development for the site off Main Street, we looked at the same level of density proposed for the Lansing Country Club site, that's actually the, if you, if you've seen plans for that development, that's something similar. Potential impacts here to the community, you can see at the low end, it's about 1500 residents, about 285 school-age kids, between 3 and 6,000 employees, and that could bump up the projected growth by not even 1% a year, but 0.35% per year. So you're starting to change the trajectory of, of the demographics projections that are showing the population to flatline or decline.
And this includes the, the last one, the Main Street?
Yes.
Both, both.
This is both combined, and then you could see how that increases.
The one along Main Street, those houses.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you could see, as you go to a medium-density type development, the potential impacts from a residential perspective of about 2,500 residents, just shy of 400, sort of just shy of, or just above 450 households with school-age kids. Between, your, your employees don't increase a whole lot, because those two large office sites that we talked about are driving the bulk of those numbers. You can see the impacts there, and then, you know, at the, the densest, you could, you could see those, all those areas build out maybe 4,000 more residents in the community. Any questions on this, I've got a few more slides to share.
Some on the economic impacts.
We're getting to that. That's the next piece. I wanted to break down these numbers one more time, just a little bit differently. So what we did is we looked at your demographics today, so, and then, you know, how, how we were able to cut that information. We looked at, if you were to grow, how you're growing today. So if, let's say Ridge Road, none of that property redevelops except for what's vacant. Main Street, NICD builds their surface lot, and single-family homes go in the property to the west, that remaining property. And then the two office sites, they develop how they're planned, right? That's a constant. You know, your population by 2040, you know, you're gaining about 195 residents. So it's, it's not a huge number of residents. Your schools are, are really not going up by much. Factoring, you know, kind of all the things in, your jobs, you know, obviously, do stay very similar, because you've got those great employment sites that, that are, are being considered. And then in your low-density growth scenario, you are able to increase your population by just over 1,500 residents. You, you could potentially add a couple hundred students, and then your jobs do go up. And then you could see kind of medium and high, how your population in these areas, just by developing these opportunity areas, could see some increase in the future. So then, these are just some character images. What I thought we might do is, for kind of almost at time, maybe, David, would you be willing to explain some of the assessed value information, kind of your inputs and then some of the results tied back to this development?
Yeah, so what we did then is, is we took this information, illustrative development concepts that MKSK came up for each of the TDD's sites, and then we converted those into revenues per acre. So we're not doing, we're not doing TDD increment or anything like this. We, what we did is we took, we took assumptions of the development.
David, we'll, we'll back up, because I think we actually have more time than here. I think we have another hour, correct?
Three o'clock central.
Yeah. I think we had till four, it's four Eastern time. Four, I know, no, no, I think we have till four central.
I, I do, I do think some, some of us thought it was the three o'clock.
Oh, okay.
So I, I do think, we can go an extra 15 minutes, and again.
Then go ahead, David, I think this leads to the, to the heart of that conclusion.
Okay.
Sorry.
So if we're doing 15 minutes, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you?
And I have a five-minute question at the end.
So why don't you jump, jump to the next? Okay, so, so what, so what we did then is we took these illustrative development scenarios, low, medium, and high, using, we have a proprietary property tax model that projects revenue. And this would be revenue-specific to the city of Munster. And then we also predicted income tax revenue that would occur for the residents, new residents coming into those areas. And that's what you see here for each, for Main Street and for Ridge, the three different scenarios, plus the medical campus, and plus the Lansing Country Club. Okay, and then bottom line, jumping to the chase, if you will, the last four rows there shows the revenue potential for each of the developments at each of the TDD based on whether it's property tax, income tax, and this is revenue per acre after that then. So just to make sure everybody's following, on Main Street, low-density, the illustrative example, based on our projections, would generate property tax revenue of just under $1 million. The income tax that would be generated, and once again, this is based on residents in the, in the development, would be just under $200,000 for a total revenue generation of 1.17. When you convert that to a per acre, you're looking at about $33,000 per acre. And as you can assume, and, and, you know, my hypothesis, if you will, be that as your density increases, the, the potential for revenue generation increases as well, and that's what, that's what is shown on this calculation is, as your density increases, the potential revenue generation increases as well, both on incoming and on property tax.
So from a functional standpoint, what if the folks at the lowest density, given the way that the state has established transit districts, or the transit development district served by the Ridge Road TDD, there would be at the capacity of whatever development scenario we're, we're, we're looking at, that is an annual to be used in service of that district, very similar to how the tip rate, which is, no.
No, no, this is, right, this, this is, this is not a, this is not a TDD increment calculation. This is, this is, what is the revenue capacity, or what is that illustrative development generated revenues?
And what would happen with those revenues, those illustrative?
Well, in this, this example, I mean, this is just revenues that are generated by, by the development. If it's vacant land, that's new revenue.
Until 2047, and we'll go back to the district.
Well, I, yeah, but I, I guess, don't you, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the increment. So this is, I mean, to, to your answer, yes, this is, $2 million would be generated every year from this. Okay, but this is not a, okay? So if, if it was, you know, we didn't, because we think, if, to do the increment analysis, you gotta go through the base, you gotta do all of that type of work. This is just, what does this development, as illustrated, what does it generate in revenue?
And then some smaller number of that, than, than these projected here, would be the increment that would go back to the district.
Yeah, or if, yeah, or if it's vacant land, then a very large part of that number would be, right?
And a lot of these areas, it is either vacant or large parking areas with small buildings.
So the exercise, the exercise here really isn't about YTOB or YTD. If the exercise is really, let, let's focus on what type of development the community wants to have in its area, and, and in these sites. And here is, and here's examples of the, of the revenue potential for those type of, of development scenarios.
And then I'm just trying to take one more step and translate that to the lived experience for residents, you know, utility rates, or like the economic impact of current residents. You know, it's, it's probably much longer, because I have a lot more to learn about how to think about that, but the town will be changing around that. And there would be, the farther you are to the right, the more money there would be for development for really unique things to make Munster stand out, and then after 2047, all of those revenues will go back.
Yeah, I mean, to the point that was raised, I mean, this is not a cost-of-service analysis, that, that, that's, that's you know, the continuing dialogue that has to occur, you have to talk through that. This is just strictly based on these proposed developments. Here's the revenue generation.
I think so. It's, you know, get excited about, you know, the larger number. However, outside of what you're talking about increment that can be put back into Munster, once the 2047 comes, Munster wouldn't capture all that, because the, the way the financing, Tricia and Wendy can help me here, but I think the way, we are capped, so you can never get more than 3% than you had the previous year. So there, so the million, the 2 million, we get, we wouldn't get that, that, that's the way the state prescribed. I may not be saying it well, so that you're understanding me, but it's not like all that money that we would be able to utilize that for future repairs, et cetera, for the roads, because the state will not give us that money back. They will give no more than 3, is that right, Tricia, it's like no more than 3%?
It's capped at whatever the non-vehicle rate is, but if you can show three years where we've gotten 3% or more, then we could exceed it for that period of time, and we have to, I have to look to see how does that work in a, in an increment situation like this, like this would be.
But it's not a dollar-for-dollar, like you see 2 million, Munster's not getting 2 million more dollars.
And that's, that's exactly, that's what I, that's what I'm, yeah, right, and I'm wondering as well, he did this whatever the number ends up being, how much of that is actually going back to the town during the time that he can fund things like our street guys to be out there, our, our police officers, our fire, the operational, like, yeah.
That's what I see, because numbers, I mean, numbers can be exciting, but they only tell so much with certain, you need the other numbers to actually see where your eyes.
And, and can we ask that, can we ask that question? That, that increment that we're getting back on a yearly basis, funds development and things. Is there potential for that to fund other things, i.e., you know, maintenance, or superduses, police, fire, cost of service in those areas, so to speak, that are new costs that we might have?
Increment dollars.
I'm sorry to ask that question. Yeah.
Sorry.
Forgive me.
Increment dollars are very similar to tip dollars, and they, they can't be used for operating on.
So at the close of, say, the tip district, let's put in our tip district, when that's done, that assessed value goes back onto our rules.
Out of waters.
If we're, if we're perhaps capped, then that reduces the tax rate of everyone else's, right? So if the money doesn't go away, it is shared by the taxpayers in the community, so my tax bill builds on yours. Now, to I think Leanne's point, that doesn't pay for the expenses, it's a nice-to-have as a resident, but it doesn't provide traditional service, but it doesn't disappear necessarily.
Right, and, and when the increment tip in your example, when that flows back, and see whether we reestablish a tip or not, that dollars now get to be spread among all taxing districts, because it's not like 100% of that comes to town. School, town, library, all of the others.
We get our allocation.
We get our, our portion of it.
Can I ask one question? But the, the funding could essentially be used to improve an infrastructure to a state of good repair, right, which could potentially reduce maintenance costs and maintenance expenditures. Is it, can't be spent within the district alone, or can it be, like I said, where it contributes to the area?
No, it, it can only be used within the, it does, it does not have the, the tip language that allows you to use it.
Then can you increase the, can you do the, the TOB? And bring it from 2, 320 to 640, and then you have a larger area where you can use those ones.
And similar to how we kind of have sketched out the districts thus far, you can kind of be creative with those boundaries to capture areas that may be not addressed.
Just curious on the 340 or 320 versus 640. Is, you said something like 10 or 15 years later, you could double your size?
There's really not a time, there's no time.
So you could come out at six forty, red up lots. No, no, but the statute does distinguish that you gotta come out at three twenty, but a month later, you go to six forty. And now that I've got my composure, can I respond to some of those comments? Um, so I appreciate the, the, what, what was being said is correct. The state, the state limits the growth in the max levy of a community. And the max levy then, um, so the exercise that, you know, Munster, and I'm, I'm by stating the obvious, the exercise being the levy divided by the AV gets your tax rate. As your AV increases, that tax rate goes down. And circuit breaker goes down. These calculations here take all of that into account. So when, when this says that, that there's going to be two point seven million dollars total generate, revenue generated. Per deducted to generate Main Street high density takes all of that into consideration, that's the way our model works. Um, so, but a big circuit breaker into effect that takes the, the max levy that the state imposes and all that into effect. And, and so this additional revenue. This is, this is real, this, this, this would be an example of real revenue generation. Which, because we're capped. I'm not gonna say new, I didn't say new, I'm just saying this is an example of revenue generation with this development, but it depends on what development was. Right, and, and so what this does, because we're capped, it reduces the tax rate for residents in town. As your, as your overall AV grows. Right. Okay, your tax rate. Right, okay. After expiration of the transit development district, because during the transit, and this is a question, not a statement. During the transit development district life, so until twenty forty-seven. That is captured, not this number, but the increment is captured in the respect in transit development district.
So pay for the train. That's the agreement we made with the state.
No. Then pay for the train, it, it, it pays for development in the, in the TDD. So yes, just like a tip, to the extent that if the, the AV is captured. And not part of the base, then it wouldn't apply, but just like a tip, the, the AV can be given back to the base on an annual.
After, after expiration.
I'm sorry.
The AV can be given back to the base.
You're out. Just like a, just like on a tip district where the RDC can pass back some of the incremental that chooses on an annual basis, the TDD will work the same way. Very good, thank you.
Austin, were there questions in chat, I just.
Uh, well, I'm a participant, so.
Let's see.
Oh. How, I think we could scroll up with the, uh.
Oh, you want?
Yeah. Now, whether or not I can read it.
I can read it, when will the, if you scroll down, oh, sorry. When will the public hearing for the proposed TDD boundaries take place? Um, the next, the next step, um, with the, the RDA board would review, and the statute requires the RDA board to hold two public hearings. Before adopting, and so those have not been scheduled yet, there would be two public hearings. And how would people worry about those once they were scheduled? I guess the answer, the, the question, the, one of the answers I would say is, the town council or once, the town of Munster will know about those public hearings, right? There, and, and once we find out about them, I'm more than happy that we can announce them at a, at our town council. Yeah.
And like, and that's just to draw districts, but not to determine what is coming.
That's exactly right, I was gonna say the same thing, Leanne, the districts, the green, the green color map that we saw. That's, that's what would be approved, nothing about what happens inside, because it's really locally, that's local. That's, that's all local, we're just trying to give you tools to help frame out what you may want to think about those, right?
No, I, I, I think the, the challenge with this process is, is that we can have enough public education about what's happening here. And at the same time, some of the, the knowledge of how government works. Uh, you know, this, these, this discussion's been going on for a while, and some people will say, wow, not much has happened. Because it's been a lot of meetings back and forth, other people say, wow, this all changed overnight, and we don't know about it. Um, there's still a lot between now and, you know, actually a developer coming in here with a proposal to, to talk about something, to. Suggest something, to have it be reviewed. Um, in, in a way, this is government working at its finest, nice, long, slow process that people forget sometimes what happened three years ago and things like that, so. Um, I, I guess. What I think the council's interested in doing is making sure that we have some public education happen, quite frankly, just to educate the council on a lot of the stuff. So I appreciate the time that we took today to really get kind of a, a basic look at this. Um, and certainly welcome questions by people, but at the same time. There's, there's many steps along the way in this process, and, and while it sounds like approval, that. Just because something's approved doesn't mean the next day there's gonna be, you know, things being, you know, built and, you know, concrete formed, being in the ground and stuff like that. Uh, this is a, this is a pretty lengthy process, but it's a big process, it's a transformational process that we want to make sure we, we get as much information as we can. And that we can able to see, uh, that, that ten years from now, or fifteen years from now, we can look back and say, yeah, we did look at this. Um, this is a preferred action that, that the town Munster, town council took at that time, we took into consideration. Uh, the departments in town, the schools in town, the residents in town, you know, this is, this is a full town, uh, operation here, we want to make sure we look at it from all sides.
You're, you're right, this is gonna play out over long period, long period of time, decades. The, uh, even the approval of the boundary, we're several months away from the approval of boundary. The other planning work that we can offer the town through the FTA grant that Aaron talked about earlier. That, that does have a time limit, you know, so however we can help you think about TOV between now and July, we're mobilized to do that. Um, if it's more education, if it, if it's more studies, um, you know, let us know. I know you as a group need to talk and figure out, you know, where, where your comfort level is.
One of the biggest things on my mind that we've set out on our P for comprehensive plan was twelve years ago, last time you visited, and it seemed like there's an opportunity. To incorporate all the knowledge that you have gained about our community over all this work and our other parties, like into. That in a smart way, I don't know if it's evaluating RFPs or keep track, kicked off before, I think you said end of July is the.
Doesn't time up with your comp plan schedule right now. There might be a little overlap, though.
Right, how, how, how could, well, how could we benefit in that, they, that's one of our big projects, how can we benefit from this in that before July?
Well, and, and I will say that, that you guys are like a lot of communities in North Coast Indiana that we're working with, uh, who are. You know, saying, hey, you know, we want to learn as much as we can through this TOV process, and the goal is, you know, how do we. Through education, through best practices, through development testing, things like this, get you all to a point where, when you're updating your comp plan, you know what questions to ask. Or you, you know, uh, enough about the TDD process so that. As you are working with your consultants to update your comprehensive plan, which is your guidance document for land use development. Um, you know, what, how, how does this information get folded in a thoughtful way? That, uh, allows for the community to develop in the way the community wants to develop, but informed by the fact that, that the train is happening and there is an economic development. Opportunity, that's really, I think the goal, and as far as our, our process and, and kind of deliverables, I mean, we are putting together. Kind of a planning document, we've been working very closely with kind of this group, um, you know. I think that a couple of things to consider would be, you know, we, we are looking at your zoning code. Same consultants that wrote your zoning code, so it's a good opportunity to maybe get some advice from them on, on some things that you might want to tweak in the near future. Um, and, and they're kind of at a point where they're gonna be ready to meet with Tom and Dustin, uh, here in the near future to have that discussion about kind of their thoughts. And some priorities such as parking that, that we know, um, may exist already in the community for us to look at. From a land use perspective, you know, thinking through future land use character of these TODs, so not assigning. Um, you know, your future land use designation that you would then take and adopt as part of your comprehensive plan, but talking about the character of potential. Point in this area to then help start guiding that conversation, uh, within the TDD boundary in line with what we've heard from all of you. And, and kind of what we understand at least at this moment in time to be sort of the vision of the community. Um, looking at things like Main Street that, that have, you know, um, some MPO funding attached to, to it, to do some engineering. Um, you know, getting in front of that process, I mean, we didn't get to that today, but I would definitely want to have that opportunity to talk with you all about, right, your preferences, similar to. Uh, what you just went through on, on the Ridge Road project, not as deep, but at least coming up with some ideas and concepts and making sure it ties into the station area correctly. So those are the kinds of things that we're, we're working on over the next several months. We would be open to advancing some of these development concepts, uh, a little bit deeper, uh, where be it you say. We want you to advance one of these development thresholds, or maybe it's a hybrid. Um, or, or maybe it's, we just want it to stay at the high level for now, and, and we'll kind of listen to you all based on your feedback after this meeting.
Well, at the end of the day, what we're trying to really do is help you bring about the right kind of tune. So, um, our scope does have, you know, distinct elements, but we are also pretty flexible in what we can adapt that scope to be. So if you feel like you need some, some support and other, other aspects that we haven't talked about, just let us know, because. The goal here is to get you ready for when the train is operational and you've got that avalanche of people knocking on your door to develop in your community. Whatever we can do to help get you prepared for that is the goal of this project.
I, I know we're short on time, Leanne, is there anything else that you'd like to finish up with, or any kind of last comments?
Um, I would just say, the one thing I was thinking about is that we're focusing on housing. Seems to be, and that's what the destination was of, uh, twenty twenty-four was about yesterday, was housing, but when I look at. Um, you know, we're talking about AV, commercial is the higher three percent, and I just, I had this thought, and I don't know if it'll work, but. Given that, the, that the train now, so it's going to end at Main Street is where it's ending. Would we want to consider, uh, looking at drawing national headquarters, I mean, you've got housing in Hammond, Hammond has said that they're gonna build. I think it was a total of five hundred, uh, residential units, and they're gonna build a train station. Everybody here tends to get on the train and go to Chicago, but is there not an opportunity for people to get on the train and come to a national headquarters? Because it's near three percent, but you also have limited, you need less resources because it's more of a nine to five, nine to six versus. Around the clock for our police, our streets, et cetera, so I just thought that might be an interesting concept to you.
It would be, I mean, Caterpillar just did that, um, three years ago, located to a suburb that was along the train line. Um, so there's definitely something to, to think about, consider that.
It's very, very good.
A little slop by main that street.
Leanne, anything else? Steve, anything else you want to finish up with?
Just thinking about how we hook into the comprehensive plan, a few ideas came up, one is like an API, right, if you're developing a software. There's an API that has a thing program based on how you interact with them. It's metaphorical.
I was gonna say, thank you for defining API, I still don't know what it means.
Was it application protocol or?
Application program interface, so if you want to get some value from some application, so we want to get value in what we need to do from the TOV work that you all are doing. Like, how, how do we interface with it? Like, so I guess what I'm saying is, what are some inputs, if we can think about what are inputs we'll need for our comprehensive planning? That might be available in the work you're doing, how do we sort of prepare that work as an output? That's available to us, and we know in the planning group how to get, how to get what we need. Does that make sense?
Yeah, often we, we are kind of running parallel to other planning processes, and the best way to kind of get to your question is to meet with that group, whoever that group is, sit down. Walking through what we've done and understand what they need from us, like what would be valuable for them to take forward.
And do we know Chuck, Dustin, Tom timeline for when we might make a decision for?
Uh, I would say, we'll probably, probably have a contract by this launch.
Okay. Okay, so that, that will be something good to have, and for us somehow to be aware of those meetings and what's going on. And then the other thing that came up was, uh, like a pilot area, right, this.
There's thirty-five acres and forty-three acres, and if we identify one area, we go a little bit deep, like a strategic area, a little bit deeper than dying or.
Particularly if you have a property owner that you know would really like to, you know. Sell property or change the property situation, that would be a good one to start.
Right, and something in the Ridge, Ridge Road area and Main Street, like that would be interesting to have two things that we could start to really seek our teeth into imagining what's all.
Uh, and then final is, is frequently asked question, especially from residents. You know, some well-established documents, some of the hardest questions that we get, maybe we can do that work, get questions. My house is in a green area, what does it mean, right, and so that we can really flesh out. The implications for, for people. Close your mind. And thank you for this.
Again, I think all I want to say is, with closing this, uh, this presentation, thank you very much for your time, I, I do think there's, uh. There's great opportunity here that we could build upon the strengths of Munster and, and really look at creating that shared value and vision for what we want Munster to look like in. Five, ten, fifteen, forty years, so thank you very much for your time, everybody else, thank you. Uh, residents that are here, I'm gonna, you stick around, I'll, I'll make sure we address, or at least find out what other questions you guys have other than that.
Oh, and this is recorded, is this being recorded, will it be available?
Yes, it's recorded.
Yeah, I'll get with Dave Wellman, and, uh, we can either get you a link to it, or we can get it posted with the RDC's YouTube page and get you a link to that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone on the line.